First item of business is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the following two items of new business. Item number five, a resolution setting a public hearing for closure of a portion of Service Route 1333, Country Club Road, and item number six, the fourth amendment to the option agreement between the Wagstaffs and Person County.
And for the approval with the adjustments?
A motion for approval on the floor, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is consideration of approval of private road, is it Bratta Farm? Is that correct? Drive to be added to the database for E-911 dispatching, this phone.
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into public hearing?
Yeah, if I have a motion to go into the public hearing, and we do, end of discussion. Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
End of this phone.
Good evening, Commissioners, and you had it exactly right, Bratta Farm Drive. The owners of four parcels of land along an access easement are adding additional dwellings. As you know, when the third home gets added to a private driveway, we are required to name that driveway by our ordinance regulating addresses and road naming in Person County. The family came up with and completely agreed upon the name Bratta Farm Drive. I'm not sure what it means, but it means something to them, and that is consistent and compliant with our address ordinance, and we would recommend that the roadway name be approved. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, anyone?
When I look at the map, I'm looking at 309, 303, and then the lot beside it.
Correct.
Those are the three?
Correct, yes, I think there's four total, I want to say...
421.
421 has legal access to the driveway, but they won't be using it, but they do have legal access to it, so they were contacted as part of this project.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone speaking in favor or in opposition to this request?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, there's no individuals.
None at all, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Motion to close the public hearing, end of discussion. Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Non-russian carried.
Thank you.
So item number two would be consideration to grant or deny approval of the private roadway, Bratta Farm Drive to be added to the database for E-911 dispatching. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the recommended roadway name.
We have a motion on the floor for approval, end of discussion. Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you.
So item number two would be consideration to grant or deny approval of the private roadway, Bratta Farm Drive to be added to the database for E-911 dispatching. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the recommended roadway name.
We have a motion on the floor for approval, end of discussion. Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. This time on our agenda, we do have a period set aside for public comment that we hear from our citizens at this time, and Madam Clerk, do we have the Speaker signed up?
Yes, sir, we have one individual.
Okay, we have ten minutes, so...
All right, if I can instruct IT to please set the timer for ten minutes. Andrea Childers is our first speaker, or excuse me, our only speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wow, ten minutes, what I would have killed for ten minutes six months ago. I don't have that much to say anymore, so, as you know, my name is Andrea Childers. I've lived in Person County for almost thirty-two years. Last week, my husband and I watched a movie, Dark Waters, on Netflix. I ask each of you to take two hours to watch and educate yourself. It was a really good movie. While you're watching this movie, I want each of you to ask yourself this question, as I did about a hundred and fifty times. How many times in our nation's history must corporations teach our government at all levels, local, state, federal, that they cannot be trusted to regulate themselves before this lesson is finally learned? The only thing corporations care about is their bottom line, making the largest profit that is possible. They care nothing about being a good corporate neighbor. They care nothing about the health and safety of the communities in which they set up shop. They care nothing about the environment that they are polluting. Dominion cares nothing about Person County. At this stage of the deal you have made with Dominion Energy, the only thing that we can do to protect our county is to set up air monitors on both ends to make sure that the air that we are breathing is not poisoning us, our friends, and our loved ones. And finally, I have copies for you from Adam Wagner's article from the NNO, "Is Dominion Overestimating Toxic Air Pollution from Its Proposed North Carolina Gas Storage Site", as well as Laura How's article, "Community Outcry in Person County Concerns Rise Over Proposed Liquified Methane Storage Facility from the Appalachian Voices Newsletter". Just in case you hadn't had a chance to read them yet, I got them for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our informal comment here.
Right, thank you. Item number three on our agenda is discussion, adjustment, approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion, do we have discussion? Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number four is ALS 360 Fire Component Proposal Follow-Up, Manager Kathy?
Okay, good evening Commissioners. On August the twenty-second, the Fire Chiefs Association met, and this was following your last meeting on August fifteenth. They met with Commissioner Sims present, as well as Emergency Services Director Tom Schwalenberg and EMS Division Chief Heather Chandler. Two representatives from each department also attended that meeting, and they discussed the fire component of the ALS 360 program that we have been reviewing for several months now. A vote was taken, with the chiefs voting in favor of using fire tax funds to support the ALS 360 program, with seven departments voting for the proposal and two voting against it. After the vote, each department made requests for the equipment that they felt would best meet the needs of the citizens they serve. The requests were driven primarily by geography of their districts and standardization of their fleet. So the original proposal provided you with a recommendation for two AEDs and one Lucas device for each department. After the fire departments submitted their request, it did increase the total requested by four AEDs and four Lucas devices. So the six, or the seven fire departments who voted in favor have all requested equipment. Timberlake Volunteer Fire and Rescue did not vote in favor of participating in the program, so there is no equipment included for that department. And the Roxborough Person County Rescue Squad also voted no for the program, stating that they act as a support agency that arrives on scene after the fire departments are already there. So their having a Lucas device would not provide a benefit, an added benefit, since they would be operating in partnership with the fire departments on scene, who would already likely have the device there. And they have also recently updated their AEDs, so they did not state a need for additional machines. So there is a chart included in your agenda packet that does show you what has been requested by Allensville, Cepho, Hurdle Mills, Samora, Triple Springs, Mariah, and Roxborough Fire. So that is a total of twenty AEDs and thirteen Lucas devices. Stryker has provided a revised quote that incorporates the additional equipment. So the total would be one hundred thirteen thousand two hundred six dollars annually, and that is an increase over the previous amount, which was eighty thousand five sixty-two. So do you have any questions about the request that has come from the Fire Chiefs Association after they took a vote and then evaluated their individual departmental needs?
I don't understand the reasoning that you just stated about the rescue, but what about Timberlake?
They did not provide a reason during the meeting with their vote, is my understanding. And I was not present, so I have gathered this information from persons that attended.
So what happens there with their department?
Well, that's up for the Commissioners to decide. You all allocate the funding towards the program, and, you know, it's before you to consider what's been requested by the Fire Chiefs Association. With one fire department not having that equipment, then it's not going to be readily available by first responders, who would be the first on scene most of the time in that part of the county in the Timberlake District, whereas it would be available elsewhere in the county with all of the other departments who requested it. So as Commissioners, you could decide, well, this is a program that we would like to make sure is available throughout the county, and you could fund the equipment for Timberlake and work with them on implementing that part of the program, or approve what's been requested without the equipment from Timberlake, or choose not to move forward with the program, that's at your discretion.
Is there a warranty on this equipment?
So this is a ten-year program, and along with the program, there is a maintenance and service contract that is there for each piece of the equipment. And so Stryker will come on site to do annual maintenance on the equipment and to make repairs that do crop up their some...
Does he have those numbers, the maintenance numbers?
So it's all incorporated in the total that has been provided in the one hundred thirteen thousand two oh six annually. That plan covers the initial purchase of the equipment. It covers a refresh of the equipment over the ten-year period, so it purchases a second piece of equipment. So you're really getting two pieces, two of the same type. So, for example, at the top, Allensville would initially get two AEDs and one Lucas device. As we move forward with this agreement over the ten-year period, at year six, both of those devices are eligible for replacement. And over that time period, you're also covered with the maintenance and service agreement for the ten-year period as part of the program.
So is there a cost for when they come to replace it? Is there going to be any extra cost, or they're just going to come in and after six years replace it, and life goes on?
So Tom could probably better respond to those specific questions related to how the program works, and he is here today, if you'd like to hear from him on that piece of it. But it is, the replacement is included in the plan, and they come on site as part of the plan. So my understanding is there's no additional charge when it comes time to do the refresh, it's just part of the program, and I got a nod on that.
One of my other concerns and questions is with the contract is we're three years in, four years in, and we decide to cancel this contract, what's our cost going to be?
Okay, and I do not have a specific number on that. As presented in a previous, you know, as a program overview, one of the exit options is, before the ten years has expired, the county could purchase at fair market value based on residual cost formula. Factors to determine value would include age of equipment, condition of equipment, market influences. So we would be required to give Stryker ninety days' notice. I did some very rough estimates of what that might look like, and again, it is unknown as to what the exact figure would be at any given point in time because of factors that can change. So if you look at the initial purchase, and this was specific to the EMS, because you had asked for the EMS component and all of the equipment associated with that. So in that example, that is purchasing one point five million dollars' worth of equipment, or that's part of the plan. We would be leasing one point, the value, the initial value of the equipment is roughly one point five million dollars. If you just depreciate that just straightforward, if the lifespan is seven to eight years, then you look at that after two years, you're at around one point three six million. So say that's the fair market value, and again, that's just a rough estimate. At four years, you'd be at about six hundred and fifty-five thousand. So that's the way I looked at it, as far as how the equipment might just depreciate in a standard way over time. When it comes time, if the county were to choose to exit the program, we'd be paying the fair market value for whatever the equipment is that we have purchased at that time. And if we've had, if equipment has been damaged and it's been replaced sooner, then it's not going to be as old, so it would not have depreciated as much. And there are other factors that could influence it too, such as adding to our fleet at that time.
As I look at what Tom presented to us, I was looking at, we have a total of five ambulances that are currently in service, and two are scheduled to be delivered for November twenty-fourth. One ambulance has been ordered. So if I look at the Lucas compression device, and I count what we have, what we are, the age, are we looking at getting one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine Lucuses? Or are we just looking at getting what we have, where I see the age of six, 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 one, one, one?
So you're looking at the EMS proposal now and not the fire proposal?
I'm looking at what he sent us with the EMS biomedical patient transport fleet equipment age breakdown.
Right.
And I'm looking where it says Lucas chest compressions, and it's a eight-year...
When it comes time, if the county were to choose to exit the program, we'd be paying the fair market value for whatever the equipment is that we have purchased at that time. And if we've had, if equipment has been damaged and it's been replaced sooner, then it's not gonna be as old. So, it would not have depreciated as much. And there are other factors that could influence it too, such as adding to our fleet at the time.
Well, as I look at what Tom presented to us, I was looking at, we have a total of five ambulances that are currently in service. And two are scheduled to be delivered for November twenty-fourth. One ambulance is already, has been ordered. So, if I look at the Lucas compression device and I count what we have, what we are, the age, are we looking at getting one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine Lucuses? Or are we just looking at getting what we have where I see the age of six, 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 one, one, one?
So, you're looking at the EMS proposal now and not the fire proposal?
I'm looking at what he sent us with the EMS biomedical patient transport fleet equipment age breakdown.
Right.
And I'm looking where it says, uh, Lucas chest compressions and it's a eight-year expected service life.
So, on that particular chart, M-one through M-six are the ambulances. That is the number that we have when our fleet is fully in operation, are six of those trucks. So, that is devices for six ambulances. And then from there, you have supervisor vehicles and you have other, the, primarily the supervisor vehicles, EMS ten, thirteen. There's other numbers there. So, it's EMS personnel who are responding on scene separately. They might get there quicker when an ambulance is out of the county or not.
So, when the new ambulances come, they're gonna need this device as well. So, that's the extra, that's more cost.
Well, no, we would move it from one ambulance to the other. I mean, because we are going to, we're gonna maintain six in our fleet. So, the equipment can be moved from one to another. If we have a new Lucas device on one of these that will be taken out of service, then we put it on the new ambulance when it arrives.
Okay. My next question is the volunteer fire departments. I'm guessing that to use this device, they would be the EMTs. And if that's correct, and do they have training on this now? Or are they gonna have to be trained on this device?
They will be provided with training. I'm not sure if it requires an EMT certification. It's the first responders who are in our first responder program can utilize this equipment. They do not have to be EMTs.
So, if, and, so if we have a emergency situation and we have a, the volunteer fire departments responding, the first person that gets there, if it's a volunteer fireman, then he doesn't have this device. He's gonna have to do chest compressions. He's gonna do, what is guy do until someone comes with the device?
Correct. So, each department has worked to identify who they typically have on scene first and would likely have that person equipped with a Lucas device.
The other, the other thing I think about is, and I don't mean this in a bad way. It may sound like people will twist it any way they want to. But my thought is each department, some of these departments are getting two of these devices.
Right.
And I guess my question, and I wish I could ask each volunteer fire department, is how, how often do they, would they use this device? You know, my concern is that if they get it and it sits in their vehicle for years and they don't use it, you know, we're putting a lot of money into this. So, my, my concern is how often would they use it? And that's not, I don't, that's a question, loaded question that probably nobody can answer. But that's one of my thoughts as we look down the road. Certainly, we wanna save a life and we, we don't wanna put a value on it. But how long do you, does it go? And we say, wait a minute, we've got four departments that haven't used this device in five years, which I guess is a good thing, but they haven't had to respond to a cardiac arrest.
True.
But, you know, that's my question with that. The EMS, I'm sure they're the ones that, I mean, they're gonna be there, they're gonna have their ambulances, they're gonna, they need that device. It's just a question of, um, from the volunteer fire department's standpoint.
And what I heard in the meeting that I attended, I, I was not able to go on the twenty-second, but I went to the meeting prior to that. So, the discussion was that for these departments that requested more than one, it was because they have a substation. And the departments that have substations are generally larger geographically. So, if they had two, that provides them a better ability to be on scene quicker with one of those in the larger geographically spread-out fire district. And there was discussion amongst them of, yeah, we don't know how much this would be put to use. But in the event that the need arises, this could be a very useful piece of equipment, life-saving equipment when the need does arise, you know? We all hope that it doesn't, but if it does, and that's unpredictable, then having this piece of equipment could be a big asset.
Well, in that meeting also, Catherine, they mentioned, you know, there's a couple of departments that, you know, questioned the cost, how much we are actually paying with this program.
Right.
Versus what if we, what we could get it if we were not in this program, just went and bought it from another medical supplies company or something of that nature. And I understand there's a maintenance program and there's a, you know, they'll come in and replacement and those sort of things. But, I mean, one of the, whether it's true or not, I don't have the, the actual sheet from it. But it was kinda mentioned, you got a battery, you're paying, you know, four hundred dollars for it if you go to the medical supply stores. But if you go through this program, it may be costing us nine hundred dollars. And so, I know that was a concern on some of the people who made their concerns made during that meeting when I was in it.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, and that's something else to think about. I mean, it's a, it's a lot of money that we are committing our county to. And it's something that we, uh, as, as county commissioners, we think about, is that the best way to spend our money? Or is there other options? So, um, but I, I, I know that the volunteer fire departments voted for it. I know they said they wanted it or they, they wanted the program. And we saw what their needs were. And I just, I just hope if this were to be voted on and approved, I hope that not three or four years later, we're saying, we, we shouldn't have done this. And this, that can happen. But that's my, my thoughts on that. And I know that the, some of the, the, some of the reports that he gave me, some of the numbers he gave me is that the, um, you've got eight years, I think, on the Lucas device, if I'm not mistaken. And we've got one, two, three Lucas devices that I see are six years old. And then we got one, two, three that only a year old. So, uh, are we gonna be compensated somehow with that? Or are we just gonna go ahead and get all six new Lucuses? Or how is that, how, how, what's the plan on that?
There's a trade-in value recognized as part of this program. And sorry, I'm, I am trying to verify.
Is it a good trade-in? I mean, is it worth, I mean, you know, what are we gonna get?
I don't know the exact dollar figures on that.
So, Commissioner Sam's question there about, um, any piece of equipment that would sit idle for a certain amount of time, would not those departments that have those devices and don't use them frequently, could they not internally set up a turn it on once a month deal or whatever? That, that would satisfy, that make sure this device does fire up, turn on, whatever you wanna call it, and it does work rather than sitting on the shelf and gathering dust? You wouldn't want to just grab it off the shelf and take it out, not knowing that it was functional. It would appear to me that those departments would internally take care of that. It would seem to me that. And, and another thing, you can buy parts for everything from, uh, these devices to a motorcycle all over internet, but all over internet does not come service. And that's, to me, a big thing. You can go back to service to anything, a washer dryer, an automobile, or these devices. Service is extremely important. That brings another thought to mind. These service techs, and I don't know who can answer this, how local are they? Where would they need to come from to service a device in the event it needed it? And do they have trained technicians to, to provide service on the equipment that we may purchase?
They do have one located in Person County who lives in Person County.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Who would be providing service for us.
So, it's not a long drawn out thing to get a service tech to the particular station that does need it. And good report, good, lots of numbers.
Uh, we have a lot of equipment, so this is a significant investment for the county.
And you know, all you need to do is look at Person County's tax flyer that's just went out. That reminded me that I needed to pay my taxes, which I did and went on. But the flyer's in there. And it shows the percentage of county funding that goes to public safety. I believe it's number one on that flyer.
That maybe.
And that shows the dedication of this board to public safety and the safety of our citizens. Uh, so, we need to, I think, look at it county-wide. And personally, I would hate to see any one or more department separate and wouldn't be a part of a county-wide effort to provide consistent, uh, service to citizens county-wide. Question there, does it ever happen where a call goes out and you have two departments there maybe represented at one time?
Well, I know that's the case for fires, structured fires. I'm not sure about the EMS calls.
And really, what I'm getting at would be, um, a consistency among our volunteers to provide them top-quality equipment and they all be on the same page. There would be someone in each department and each section of the county that is familiar with and has the training and abilities to use this equipment that we're considering buying. To me, those are, are important points. I would like to add that if you got one particular fire department right in the center of the county and you got Hurdle Mills to our west, Mariah to the east, both of them are approximately fifteen to twenty-minute drives, depending on how fast they go between there and Timberlake. You know, that, that could spell disaster in itself. I think we should provide them with whether they choose to use them or not, if we could follow up. Take them back, turn them in if they don't decide they wanna use them. But that's on them.
Derek, at that meeting, did, uh, Timberlake express why do they already have the equipment on hand that?
Well, the A, the AEDs, they just got AEDs, so they, they didn't have a, they didn't feel like they need the AEDs. The other thing was that, um, they didn't think they would be using the Lucas device. I got that impression. They, they didn't think they would be using it. Their thing is when we get there, we're gonna be start, we're, we're immediately starting CPR on them, uh, doing chest compressions and, and that sort of thing. So, um, and, you know, how the, how big the device is and carrying it around and what it could, uh, you know, where, where it would fit in the trucks that they, that they would use. So, that was kinda the impression I got with that.
Suppose we have a lady to arrive on the scene first and she's ten minutes out from somebody else, a man getting there. Lady's gonna wear out quicker than a man, the typical.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know about that one. So, um, yeah, and I, and I, again, I think they, they feel like that they could, that money could be spent more wisely somewhere else.
It is, you know, Timber, and Timberlake has the most number of calls.
Yeah.
And it, and it just, you know, that part, I don't understand, you know, they got the most, and they, it's on the, but the other departments do.
Right.
Are they, you know, are they, if Timberlake's not gonna use it,
Mm-hmm.
are these other departments gon- gonna use it? I mean, I, I mean, I have to put my stock in what the Fire Chiefs Association, I mean, they down with their own departments.
Yeah.
And if they feel, if those departments feel like they need it, okay, well, you know your needs better than any, better than anyone else on it. So, uh, kinda, you know, that was just a little puzzling me. And if, you know, if Timberlake had already purchased AEDs out of their portion of the tax money and, and previously, did we give them any type of little small compensation? Cause they, they did get some addition, they did get some additional equipment on it.
Well, that was brought, that was brought up in the meeting, uh, someone did, met, questioned that to me. And I said, that's not a decision I can make in this meeting. If we're gonna do something, we, it needs to be from the county commissioners agreeing on giving them extra money. And I mean, and I agree, I understand what Mr. Palmer's saying. But if they're gonna get this equipment, they're not gonna use it, let's don't waste the money and give them the equipment. You know, that's, that's my thing. It's don't, you know, they're not, they've already got AEDs and they, and they're not gonna need the, want the Lucas device. Then, you know, we just don't give it to them and then say, well, we're not gonna use it. They've already said that. So, this, I think we could look at other compensation for them.
Well, they're saying they don't want these devices or they don't want to be involved in this program period?
I think, well, they just don't, you know, basically in the program itself, like I said, they already got the AEDs.
So, what happens?
If they don't want the Lucas device, then they're not in the program.
Funding-wise, to, that just, well, whatever, I guess you have that much allocated to them included in this price.
So, the, the quote that we have is to fund the program as requested by the Fire Chiefs Association. So, it's the number of, uh, each device that has been requested by each individual fire department. So, it'll fund the program as a whole. It would go in the contracted services line item. There won't be a certain amount of funding allocated to each department for equipment. It's for the program as a whole. Part of the reason for standardizing the equipment through the Stryker program, for example, with the AEDs, the devices would, uh, collect data in the same manner that the county AEDs collected. The cords can be unplugged from the pads on the AED that is attached to the patient when EMS shows up. And we can connect our device to the pad. So, the inter-relationship or inter-operability of the equipment is an asset through this program. I also want to note, I think many of the fire departments have purchased AEDs with grant funding. So, they do have some newer equipment that isn't, um, the same brand or the same specs as this particular equipment. And I know the, the price difference was noted. These are ruggedized AEDs that are meant to be used in the field. And then some of the AEDs that are out there in service currently are past their service life for either or not, um, the same ruggedized quality that these would be. So, that's, speaks some to the difference in the price between what's been quoted here versus what some of the departments have purchased, which is the same, like with the AEDs in the county buildings, we've acquired those over many, many years. We have different models out there, different ages. So, this is in an effort to standardize it so people are familiar with the same type. They can all be serviced together and, um, budgeted for through this program.
Some of the older ones are not gonna connect with the newer ones also by, by memory of what the presentation was.
Right.
Months ago?
Right. They won't connect. I mean, this does not replace everything. But it is an effort to standardize the equipment that's used most frequently.
Well, standardization and compatibility is what I was talking about a while ago.
Right.
Countywide. Uh, I, I don't see the objection to that. Then on the other hand, if we have one or more that aren't participating, how do you handle that with the finances there? Just, just the bottom line, not.
So, the way the program is proposed.
They know what they need, they know what they want. I have a problem with it because I don't know. I don't understand any of it. But I would like to know if, if, if there's a nine-one-one call for me, I would want trained, best, to be there promptly and, and take care of me. I don't think anybody else feels any different. That's what, that's what we're, what we're doing here, providing public safety. But, uh, so I'm, I'm a little bit miffed as to why they don't wanna participate. But, but that's their call. Well, one thing I did wanna ask in talking about equipment, we're getting off subject, but while it's on my mind, what sort of, and you mentioned data, what kind of data sharing would go here with those that respond and connect all these devices with the local hospital or Durham, U, whatever?
I think Tom would be best suited to answer that question for you.
Well, you could be sure, Tom, if you don't mind, I mean, I, I don't, I, I really don't know. But again, if we're talking about countywide compatibility and um like cross actions and involvement.
Sure, uh, good evening, Commissioner, so there's really three data streams that we would look at. The first data stream is asset management, being able to track all of these assets, cause it's, it's a lot of equipment, right? So being able to track all these assets across the uh, across the spectrum, so. Uh, again, if, if I can put it into a call sort of situation for you, just to sort of explain that. Um, and I'm just gonna pick a department, I'll say Allensville, Allensville responds to a call, they've, they put the patient on their A, their uh Lucas device. We're not gonna take the patient off that Lucas device, cause that's gonna cause an interruption in patient care. We would give them a Lucas device off the medic unit and we would then take their Lucas device with the patient. Having everybody in the same system allows us to track that equipment, it doesn't really matter, quote unquote, whose it is, cause it's all county equipment. The asset management program tracks that equipment, so we know what equipment's where at any given time. To go back to your earlier question, when you asked about the maintenance of it, um, the Lucas devices and the AEDs do a self-check every day. They run a diagnostic on themselves every day and will alert if that equipment is found to have a fault of, of any kind. So yes, the providers need to be checking the equipment, I fully agree, that's how you stay um familiar with it. But this, but the equipment itself does self-checks every day and will alert the, the users if there is an issue with that piece of equipment. The second data stream really is performance improvement data stream, which is from the time the first device is placed on the patient. We immediately start tracking performance data on how those people are providing that care. It's not a, it's not a gotcha, it's not meant to be a disciplinary thing, it's how do we improve the care that we're giving to the citizens? Did we pause here, did we, did we do something here that delayed patient care? And we can track all of that from beginning to end, so if, um, how, how do we get better? Again, I, I think I said in an earlier presentation, you know, our cardiac survival, out of hospital cardiac arrest survival rate last year. For non-traumatic cardiac arrest was eleven percent, my goal is to be at twenty-one percent, that's my goal, we're not there yet. This equipment helps us get closer to that goal, so that's more people walking out of the hospital alive. The third piece of it is data transference from the scene to the hospital. So there are pieces of equipment, if you look at the bottom of that sheet where we talk about the Life Net Gateway and the modems and stuff like that. That allows us to transmit data to the hospitals, so that the hospitals have that information. One of the things that we can't say do today, just to, to put it in an example, is if fire department X shows up and they put their patient on that AED. I have no way of knowing, nor do the physicians have any way of knowing what that patient's presenting rhythm was, you know, what was done. We have no way of knowing that information other than potentially, maybe what somebody tells us. We capture all that electronic, all that information electronically, we some, we um can submit that to the hospital, we also download it into our patient care system. The benefit to that is if this person survives this cardiac arrest, is if we get what we call ROSC, or return of circulation on this patient. We can now go back through this equipment and say, this was the presenting rhythm, this is why this person went into cardiac arrest, how do we fix it? Right now, we don't have that information, we don't get that information to help that continuum of care for that patient.
Okay, thank you.
You, you mentioned about uh getting the data, um, if I'm a volunteer fire department, does that data help me out at all? What, I mean, I'm sitting there, you're coming in, you're getting this data and you're gone. But from a volunteer fire department's status, is there, are, are they, that information is good for the hospital, it's good for you, your guys who come and respond. As you said, to have that information, but for them, I don't see why, how's that important to them? For them to read that when you're gonna be coming in, in a matter of minutes, probably to start working on that patient.
So again, it's all about providing the best care for the patient, so. In, in my former life, what we would do is we would, when we had a cardiac arrest call, we would download that data and then we would sit down with the providers, in- including our first responders. And say, this is what we did well, this is where we need to improve, because if we don't do that, how do we know what we're doing matters, right? So an example is. We, we all can do, we all can do CPR, we, we did this with you guys maybe a year or so ago, right? I think I'm pretty good at doing CPR, I think I'm pretty good, I'm not as good as that machine. I never will be as good as that machine for giving consistent compressions, I won't. And there's nobody out here that is, whether they think they are, they're not. So being able to provide that data back and say, this is where we had a pause, this is where this happened. And then how do we improve our processes to provide the best patient care, that's what the data does for us. You're right, if we don't share it, it doesn't do us any good.
So I guess my, again, when I'm thinking about the, what this, who this is helping, as I said, the information you wanna get for your EMS team and for the hospital. Uh, you know, I'm wondering, you know, we're, we're getting this money out of the fire tax. Uh, why would we not just put it, because again, it's, it seems like it's helping more from a data collection standpoint, the EMS. Why would we not just put it in the EMS budget?
I guess the way I view it is ultimately, it's uh helping the patient, like that's the reason behind it. So having it earlier with the, with it on scene, with the, the fire personnel, is ultimately helping the patient to be able to get the data. And it, and it can be used for training purposes, as Tom shared. As far as the funding source goes, um, when we began looking at this program, it just made sense to me that it come out of the fire tax. Because it's equipment that is housed within the fire departments and it is being utilized by the first responders. So, I mean, that's why I made the recommendation for it to come out of the fire tax, that just made sense to me. Because it's equipment that will be assigned to the fire department, so there's nothing to say it can't come out of the general fund. It's just a way of looking at how best to utilize the revenue sources that are available to the county. And since this fit within the um purpose for the fire and rescue tax district. That's why I included it in the recommended budget to come out of that funding source.
But it could've come out of the general fund if we wanted to do that, right?
Yes, it could, um, as you know, it was a tight budget year in putting together those numbers. So um, if it were to come out of the general fund, it's either pulling more out of the ARP funding that we've already um allocated towards year one of this program. Um, or allocating fund balance and then it's going to create a larger gap to make up for in the next budget cycle. To build that in on an annual basis, um, we can, you know, we know that we have that steady stream coming in within the fire and rescue tax district. We can count on having that again next year to cover this, um, and we're already know that we're gonna be challenged with fitting in the EMS component. Into the general fund budget since we've allocated the ARP funding towards that this year.
Great, greater transparency and accountability, it seems to me it's in the right place now, rather than general. Easier to follow, easy to account for.
It, it made sense to me from the accounting standpoint and the, the use of the funding, but.
What I understand is by looking at these numbers, the equipment price, though, the maintenance fee is higher than the actual equipment price. Now, if I'm going to buy a car, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna pay more on a maintenance fee than I am the vehicle. That, that's what I'm looking at, it's correct, this, right at three hundred thousand dollars for the maintenance compared to. Two sixty-eight, five ninety-five for the actual product, can you explain that, why it's, why the actual maintenance fee is higher than the actual product?
Which document are you looking at?
The sixty, page sixty, what it, sixty-two.
In the agenda packet?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause it has a breakdown of the Lucas devices. And it is sixteen.
So on page sixty-one.
Says equipment total is two sixty-eight, five ninety-five.
Okay.
And then right below it is the maintenance fee for over three hundred thousand.
Okay. So, um, I don't, this is in the handout that was given to the fire departments, yeah.
What I can tell you is, so there's two things to think about that, when you talk about the equipment fee, um, remember that at that, anywhere from thirty-six to sixty months, that equipment is gonna be replaced. So that figure actually reflects two purchases of equipment. The maintenance fee is spread out over ten years for the, for the life of that equipment, that's replacing all batteries, all pads, all suction devices, which the, the Lucas uses. That's replacing all of that expendable equipment, now unless something happens to a piece of equipment because somebody's grossly negligent, that's not gonna cover that, right? But it will cover all of the routine stuff, and I, and I, and I'll give you a case in point. The, the Lucas device has a piston, uh, it's a piston-driven uh device that does the compressions. If you get a stress fracture in that piston device and you have to replace that, that's almost a nine thousand dollar repair. So I can't sit here and tell you today exactly how Lu- how Stryker did this out, but I'm sure they took those things into account. Uh, looking at, again, cost, uh, maintenance costs going up over the next ten years and then factoring that into that. But I can't sit here today and tell you exactly every number and how they break that down.
What, I, I, I forgot what you said about the warranty factor.
So the.
The warranty, the warranty, all the, all the.
So the Lucas device has a one-year warranty, um, again.
That's really the thing that goes wrong whatsoever.
Right, so basically a manufacturer's warranty, so if you get a, a device that has a manufacturer's defect, it's covered under that warranty. The AED has a, the AEDs have five-year warranties, but again, that doesn't cover maintenance, that's just if there's some catastrophic failure of the device due to a main, uh, to, due to a manufacturing issue, then the warranty would cover that.
Just like a car.
It doesn't cover your general maintenance and that kind of stuff, that's not what the warranty covers.
Have you looked at that uh contract, yes sir?
And we do need to, to share something with you about that, I'll go ahead and let you know and then TC can add to it. So in TC's review of the contract last week, um, he did flag the question as to whether or not it would require LGC approval. That we needed to look at that, so we did and Tracy and I met with the LGC this afternoon. So the general statutes state that for a capital um, capital lease, which this falls, this would be a capital equipment lease. That if it is over a five-year term and then you look at the value of it, if it's over five years and then over five hundred thousand dollars. Then it does need to go to the LGC for approval, so it is a, oh, do you wanna?
Yes.
Okay, a similar process um to what we just did with the lobs, but not quite as involved. Um, again, we met with LGC staff, they said they could get it on the October first LGC agenda. They would need us to submit the application packet this week. Um, it does require the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing us to submit the application packet. They said, though, that if you express support for us getting the authorization, that we can go ahead and submit the application this week. And I can get that resolution on your consent agenda for September sixteenth. So that is another step that we need to go through before the contract is finalized. But TC has reviewed it, so he can comment on that, but I do want to thank him for flagging that. Um, we have learned that that is a very often overlooked um provision of the general statutes um for local governments. When Tracy reached out to them, they said, well, have you signed the contract yet, what stage are you in the process, have you already signed the contract? No, we haven't, um, we can still get this step completed, so that was gonna be the next thing, I shared a few following questions, but it fits in with your question, so.
I looked at it and it had too much lore to speak in it from that side.
And, and I did review it last week, there were a, a few minor things, uh, but really it was the LGC approval. And as I said to staff last week, the first step is, do the commissioners want to proceed with the program? Cause obviously if you don't, then the LGC approval is required, if you do, um, I don't think the LGC's indicated that there's gonna be an issue with that kind of approval.
No, they considered, they last considered this um in February for an agreement between Cabarrus County and Stryker. So they do get these from time to time, we have learned that different uh attorneys interpret the contracts in different ways. So not everyone has taken it to the LGC, but in our conversations with the LGC, they said this is something that falls within their purview to approve.
What was the total, the new total amount that needed to be taken out from the tax fund?
For fire, it's a hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred, five dollars and fifty cents annually, I rounded it up to two oh six, one thirteen, two oh six.
And you addressed a question that I had as to. Where the funding is gonna be coming from in the future, just not this one year thing.
Right.
And more than likely, that hundred and thirteen would be reoccurring coming out of that tax fund.
Yes.
And I want the, the fire departments to fully understand that this just isn't a one-time hit on that fire fund. That this is a commitment going, going forth, that that money is gonna be committed to this. And, you know, they may have future needs about staffing, you know, hiring more additional part-time staff. I just want to make sure that they understand that this just is not a one-time, one-time thing. And so I think the Fire Chiefs Association needs to be communicated that, if they don't understand, if they don't know that already.
I believe they do, um, the handout that they received says it's eighty thousand, five hundred, sixty-two thousand dollars per year. Um, that was part of the conversation, you know, as far as the, this being an annual payment. We also talked with them in the meeting that I attended about the current uh fund balance available within the fire tax um fund. And that that is something that can be utilized in the future for unanticipated needs. It's there in case the needs grow to a greater degree than the revenues grow. We do have that funding available to allocate in years to come. Um, planning, you know, with those plans in place to avoid future tax increases um within that fund. Due to having that fund balance available, that will be a tool for us to um limit the increases in the fire tax district. Um, in future years, I have no way of knowing when those needs, I mean, like you said, when the needs would outpace the revenues. But right now, we do have a healthy fund balance of one point five million dollars in the fire tax district fund. So it can be used for growing needs over time.
Um, so my understanding with the um local government, we will need a resolution, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, um, and you have not prepared that resolution as of yet, correct?
I have started drafting it today, but with other things on my plate this afternoon, after that two o'clock meeting, I did not fully finish that. And I, I wanted to make sure that y'all were okay with moving ahead, I, I know you've already got a couple of added items on your agenda tonight. So I was reluctant to put something else in front of you to approve tonight, so.
So I think what I, um, we would wait for the resolution at the next meeting. In the meantime, I would request that the um, uh, uh, the chairman and the vice chair. Speak with the Fire Chiefs Association to make sure that they have a good understanding of what's being committed to. Because once, once it's been signed, that's it. So, and I think that would give us plenty of time to um, to ensure that, I know there was one department that didn't, uh, two departments that didn't wanna participate. And so that's a question, you know, that's just less money for those two departments. That's gonna be not limited to them simply because they're not participating in the program. So I think um it would be prudent to, while we wait for the um resolution to uh be drawn up. Just have that conversation with the Fire Chiefs Association to make sure they fully understand that.
I'm fine with that, when is their next meeting? When is the next meeting? You know? When is their next meeting?
It's um, middle of September, but uh, I, I think there was a timing issue.
As far as the LGC is concerned, in order to get on the October first agenda, we do need to proceed with submitting the application. we do need to proceed with submitting the application this week, with the understanding that the board is authorizing us to move forward with it, and that you'll formalize that decision on September sixteenth. So what we were coming to you tonight is to ask for approval of the requests made by the Fire Chiefs Association, so we can make the needed calculations, um, to put into the application to the L G C so that we can move forward with submitting it. Um, otherwise, there will be a delay. It will be, the, as soon as we could get on their agenda is November twelfth. Um, and they're, they're trying to work with us to get this done by Octo- by, yes, the August first meeting date, so that we can move forward with Stryker, um, with the hopes that they'll continue to honor the quote, um, that they made at the beginning of our budget process. And so the timing of that is important.
I'll take the vote to go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It'll be October first.
The L G C meeting is on October the first.
You said August, but-
I'm sorry, October first, yes.
So, my question is, I mean, if you have to go ahead and proceed with the application while we wait on the resolution, and just by chance, the fire associations didn't realize this was going to be reoccurring, is it too late to, if they decide to, hey, we didn't realize this, we may need to use that funding for somewhere el- uh, somewhere else, is it too late to back at, um, back out that portion of what is needed for the, um, fire departments at that point?
I would take the position that we can't have a valid agreement until the L G C's approved it.
Okay.
So I think you as a board would be approving a contingent on L G C approval. Um, I know Stryker's proceeding in good faith, so I don't think they'd want us to back out, but I think until you have L G C approval, you don't have a binding contract. So I think you could back out if you, if the board felt that were, was necessary.
Well, I'm just, it's the time is the issue here. So I just want to make sure the chair and vice chair has the time whether they need to, um, have a s- uh, a little special call meeting, or if they want to call, talk to each fire department one-on-one, however you want to do it. That's, 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 that's up to you. Like I said, I, my whole thing is I want to make sure everybody is fully understands that this is going to be long-term, and I want to understand how they may be impacted with future funding.
And we can still do the motion to-
Yes, sir. I think, I think because you don't have L G C approval, you could back out if you, exactly.
We're not going to sign a co- I mean, we won't sign a contract until it goes through the L G C process.
Agreed.
So, but it would be helpful to understand where the board intends to go, so we'll know the numbers.
Okay.
Line up the stars. Do we have anyone making a motion for that?
Motion, say move, sir.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
And just to clarify, so that motion is to support the recommended action, which is the, the quote that supports the request that came through from the Fire Chief, Fire Chiefs Association.
Along with the request for the chair and vice chair to-
Yes.
Communicate with the Fire Chiefs Association.
Okay, and we'll have the resolution on the agenda for the sixteenth. And I'll put it on the consent agenda. If it needs to be pulled, then that's fine.
I would not, not that, I wouldn't-
Do y'all want to have another discussion?
Yes, I mean, I think it, that's a little, it doesn't belong on the consent agenda this time.
Okay.
We're all done, reset?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, item number five, uh, on the agenda then is a resolution setting a public hearing for closure of a portion of Service Route thirteen thirty-three, Country Club Road for September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Uh, we need a motion, uh, to approve the resolution and call for a public hearing on that date.
Say move.
We have a motion, uh, any further discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carried. Item number six on the agenda is a fourth amendment to the option agreement between the Wax Staffs and Person County. Need a motion to approve the fourth amendment to the option and purchase agreement.
Need a motion?
I need a motion, yes, sir.
So present it.
Have a motion, uh, to move forward with that, any further discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carried. Uh, for chairman's, uh, report, uh, just, I would say some of the routine things were made via health board meeting and, um, Person County Board of Health meeting attended, and, um, continue to work almost seemingly daily, sometimes hourly, with the mega park, uh, site projects that's, uh, moving forward. And, um, and I'd like to say with apologies, uh, for the Suponi Tribe of Person County, uh, to them for my, not being able to attend, uh, that due to a previously scheduled event. Uh, but at that event, and I think some of you, um, commissioners did attend, uh, there's, there's been a historic highway marker unveiled and dedicated, uh, this past Saturday. And, um, again, I regret I couldn't be there. I think this is a great event for, um, not only for the Suponi tribe, but for Person County as well. Uh, they have a longstanding, uh, admirable history in Person County, and this recognition of a marker is way past due and should have been done, uh, a long time ago. I have known, uh, many of those, um, Suponi members throughout my life. Attended school with them, worked with them, watched them in churches, watched them in government, watched them at, uh, all around the county, participating in virtually everything that goes on in Person County life. And their contribution to, to life as it is in Person County is significant. And I think this, uh, marker will bring, um, well-deserved attention to an outstanding group of citizens, uh, in our county. And, uh, so that was all of my report, and, um, manager, Kathy?
Okay, well, after a lot of hard work, we did close on the limited obligation bonds last week. I believe that was on Tuesday. And then we closed on the, on purchasing the Carolina Pride Car Wash Building on five oh one for Piedmont Community College's chat facility. So they are eager to get started on, um, renovating that building. But we have some more things to work through, um, before that happens, as far as funding goes and the agreement for that facility. But that's very exciting that we did, um, close on that property on Friday, and we'll get to move forward in partnership with the community college on that project. Um, I'd like to provide an update on broadband. So as a board, um, y'all did vote to set aside two point seven five million dollars in A R P funding. And so far, we have partnered through the Great Grant Program on a project with Bright Speed and another one with Spectrum. We are also, um, partnering. We have contracted through N C D I T with Spectrum on two cab projects, and we have recently submitted our commitment to participate in the next round of cab. So we still have one point seven million remaining of the matching funds that have been set aside. So we are looking forward to doing another project and continuing to put plans in place to connect. Um, the goal is a hundred percent, um, of our, uh, addresses here in Person County. So we are working diligently towards that goal, and we still have funding in place to leverage, um, for those projects. I also want to note that next week, um, we will be hosting a community forum here in the auditorium. And this is for, uh, our ongoing work with C C R. And, uh, they're consulting with us, um, with the Department of Social Services. So the forum will be on September seventeenth, and that's actually two weeks away. It's not next week, I misspoke, but September seventeenth from six to seven thirty here in the auditorium. So the public is invited to come share, um, experiences and opinions with the programs offered by the Person County Department of Social Services. So we hope we'll have good participation in that community forum. And we'll also share information about what's going on within the department and the services available. That's it, thank you.
Good news, Commissioner Sims.
I just had a question. Manager Kathy, on the, um, funding at P C C, you said there's still some things to work out.
Yes.
What, um, is that, uh, do you think major, or what are we, what are we looking at from that standpoint?
Well, documenting an agreement with the community college. So whether that's a form of a memorandum of understanding, or if it's structured as a lease agreement, we have been trying to find the best example to model an agreement on that would be between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Trustees, um, as far as expectations for that building now and in the future. And so they do need to have something in writing in order to go to the state, um, to draw down the five million dollars that the state allocated, um, for that building. So, a portion of that will come back to the county to fund, um, partially fund the purchase of the building, and then they'll use the rest of that funding for renovations. They are also pursuing other grant, um, funding opportunities to assist with the renovations.
And we're no longer leasing now.
We are no lo- we got, yeah, we got, we were closed by the end of the month. And so, um, oh, no, leasing the Human Services Building, that's what you're asking about.
No, I'm talking about, and I'm talking about Car Wash, I'm sorry.
No, we own that building now. We did not enter into that potential penalty phase where we would be responsible for covering the, the lease that the previous tenant had. We met that deadline.
Great, okay, that's what I was, yeah.
Lot of hard work to get there, yes, so that's okay. We are still working through the final stages of the Human Services Building and may be able to close this month, um, on that. But we, um, are, are just working through some of the documentation with the attorneys on it.
Appreciate that. Um, uh, my report is, um, again, uh, August twenty-first, attended the, uh, Food Lion Ribbon Cutting. Uh, it's a good crowd, ribbon cut. If you haven't been to Food Lion, they renovated their stores. They had a ribbon cutting, I was there to attend that. Uh, the twenty-second, attended the Fire Chiefs meeting, which has already been discussed. Don't need to go into that anymore. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, attended the Cry Freedom Good Morning Coffee Hour. That was a good presentation put on by Cry, Cry Freedom. And, um, it, um, again, was a good crowd there. It was one of the larger crowds they've, they've had, so it was good to have them there and attended that. Um, thirty-first, which is our, uh, chairman, Paulus mentioned, attended the Suponi Tribe, um, uh, the highway unveiling and dedication of the marker. Uh, it was very special, I felt honored, and, uh, we had some fellow commissioners there who were with, with us, and we had, we had a good showing for Person County. And so I was, uh, really happy with that. And I really didn't, when they got up and started giving the history of the Suponi, uh, it, it was very interesting. And, uh, to, to listen to that, and I advise anyone, if you're not familiar with the Suponi tribe and their history, is to go, go out and read about it, research the history. It's, uh, very interesting, so, something new there. Um, you know, I read the paper the other day, a city council meeting, and I know one of the things was, that was mentioned, you know, we've got, we've got growth. We've got a lot of growth in, in our, uh, city and coming into our county. And, uh, I think as we move forward, um, we need to prepare for that. We need to look at what I want to call controlled growth. We, uh, we need to make sure that our infrastructure, our schools, our workforce is prepared for it. And, um, you know, the biggest thing is, again, bringing revenue into our county and, um, and jobs. And I believe we're on the cusp right now of seeing a major development for our county. And so we need to be prepared. And as county commissioners, that's going to be our job to move forward and take care of this stuff, so, that's all I got.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, sure. Speaking of the growth, Commissioner Sims, uh, by my memory, we have eight hundred and fifty-three homes, either with permits currently, or they are in construction. Also, I did, um, go to the Food Lion Ribbon Cutting. My nephew runs the place there, so please go spend money at Food Lion. Um, and I went to Suponi, uh, tribal marker dedication. Um, did a brief presentation. I've got a lot of classmates that I went to school with, a lot of, well, some of them have, of course, deceased by now. One of them just recently, and, uh, it was sad that he was not there to see this come to fruition. Um, and what I gathered off of their presenter, they've been after this marker for eighty-nine years, and it's now completed. I forget, are we going to install it this week sometime? I think they just unveiled it, I think we're going to install it this week along Highway forty-nine north, right there we turn and go to Calvary Church. So it was a great, outstanding meeting, very moving. Uh, very pleased to have, uh, been a part of it. That's all I have.
Mr. Perry?
Um, yeah, I was able to attend the, um, road marker ceremony as well with the, uh, with the Suponi Tribe, and, um, um, that area's home to me. I grew up in that area, I've got a lot of dear friends in that area, and always warms my heart when I'm able to have the time to get up there, especially through Triple Springs in Chris- Christie, Virginia. And, um, uh, but, no, it was an outstanding program, and took a lot away from it, learned a whole lot that I did not know. And, um, so I'm just, um, honored to be a part of it.
I want to apologize to them for not being able to attend, I've been under the weather. Uh, but the Suponi fam- the tribe have meant so much to my family. Uh, we become real close. Uh, my babysitter, when I was a kid, was, was one of the headwinds. My, my wife, actual, uh, the, the chief wife was actually her. So it runs deep to my family, and I'm very proud of the, of their accomplishment.
That it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. One thing I forgot, some of you may have seen this flyer, may have seen it in the paper, but the hazardous, uh, waste event that's going on at, uh, the recycling, um, they do this once a year with, um, paints and solvents and oils and things that you normally don't take over uh, to that particular event. So if you've got that sort of a public, uh, notice kind of thing, and it's at the D S S parking lot, is that correct?
Right, on Saturday, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, that concludes our comments then. And, uh, so, and we need a motion to go into closed sessions, and all closed sessions will include County Manager Kathy, Clerk Solomon, and County Attorney Morpheus. Closed session number one for the purpose to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege with Health Director Janet Clayton and Environmental Health Supervisor Bonnie Holt allowed to attend, followed by closed session number two for the purpose of discussion of matters relating to the economic development with Economic Development Director, uh, Brandy Lynch allowed to attend. Do we have a motion?
Say move.
Motion, do we have any discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
No, you're, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, uh, Ms. Lynch, were you participating by telephone?
I looked around, I didn't see her, so.
No, she had a family matter too.
By, via phone, I'll make that note.
Thank you.
All right, we all need to give I T a little bit to shut down. All right, we all need to give IT a little bit to shut down.